Like to call this meeting to order. And I apologize, I see this is action, but what, what motion do we need for this? I don't remember.
Um, you just, you just called the meeting to order.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to have a motion for anything.
I apologize.
Okay, um, so then the, the first item up is to go over the agenda and review the minutes from the last meeting. So first I will ask if there are any changes, proposed changes to the agenda.
Rita, this is Virgil. I move to recommend approval of the agenda as published.
Thank you. And do we, do we have a second?
This is Mark. I will second that.
Thank you. And next, let's move on to the meeting. Oh, yeah, we have to call everybody, don't we? That's right.
If I could do roll, it's the first one of the year. Um, so we'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt. And then jump to Commissioner Beerling.
Hi. Commissioner Beerling, hi.
All right, so Commissioner Schmidt. So Commissioner Schmidt is on, but he would be able to. We do have, we do have enough forum to approve.
Okay, so then the motion is passed. Next up, the meeting minutes from last meeting. Are there any suggested changes to those? Otherwise, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November?
Commissioner Beerling, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November meeting.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Commissioner Casilius will second.
Thank you.
And I'll do roll, Madam Chair. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has passed. All right, looks like next up, we have election of officers for 2021. So do I call for nominations?
Correct. And this is Commissioner Pence. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rita Weaver for Chair for 2021.
And then do I need to accept, or do we look for a second?
No, you look for someone to second it.
Okay.
Commissioner Beerling, I'll second that.
Okay.
Ben, you might want to ask if there's any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Thank you, Commissioner Pence.
This is Commissioner Pence. Hearing no other nominations, I move we vote for Christian Weaver.
You didn't, you didn't wait very long.
There's supposed to be three, too.
Oh, Commissioner Weaver.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
Thank you all. Now we need a Vice Chair, Madam Chair.
All right, do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Virgil Pence. Okay, thanks. I'll, I'll accept.
Oh, we. Babe, does that count as a nomination, or do I have to not, or can we just move to accept?
We do need a Commissioner to, uh, support the nomination and another Commissioner to second.
Commissioner Casilius will support.
I will second. Commissioner Weaver.
Right. So Commissioner Weaver. For Chair, Commissioner Pence. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. I realize this is a, a lot of time, and we always appreciate all of you stepping in. Again, because of COVID and the work on the government center buildings, we will be virtual for this year. So hopefully we are easy on both our Chair and our Vice Chair and the rest of you. So we appreciate the effort and time.
Well, I will add, I, I appreciate your guys' support and how much you help, at least me, through all of this, for getting what to say or whatever, so. And the material is always put together so well, so thank you. Makes my job easy. Okay, I think since that's done, we can move on to staff reports. Troy, it looks like you're up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just a point of order, did you want to cover a calendar item, or did you do that already?
Oh, thank you. You're right. We need to look at the calendar and approve that for this year.
Very lucky.
Thank you for getting that up. I think Ryan, you're sharing. Um, do we have any comments on the calendar or a motion to approve our meeting dates as suggested?
Looks good. This is Commissioner Pence. I move we approve the calendar for 2021 as published.
Commissioner Casilius seconds.
I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Beerling.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, now I believe we can move on to staff reports.
Very well. So, um, thank you all. So I'm just reading some highlights from the report that appears in your packet. You'll see the first graph there shows the number of active service requests. Those are folks, citizens throughout the county that contact the soil and water looking for assistance, technical and otherwise with conservation-related issues. We see in January, we have about 225 active requests. About a little over two-thirds, maybe 70% of those are within the Scott WMO proper. And of those, we have, of those in the WMO, about 100 of those are active projects at various stages of either planning, development, implementation, or they're still being paid out. Soil health and cover crop is our next category. You can see for 2020, we report of, uh, over 1,400 acres of, of cropland were applied with cover crops by 14 different producers. This is county-wide, not just the WMO. But it just shows you the growth of the program that we've intended to have happen over the past couple of years with their focus on, on cover crops. Three of those, this was the first year. So we're always looking for that new number. We also published an article in the SCENE. Hopefully you all got a chance to review it. It was Local Farmers' Plants for Soil Health, and that was featuring four local producers in the Sustainable Farming Practice that they're doing. I thought it was a really nice write-up, and I appreciate the SCENE getting that published. Clean Water Education Program. We hosted our third webinar for the year. The first one was rain gardens, then we did a shoreline erosion one, and this chloride one was the third one. So this was our first year foray into webinars and online workshops. So we thought they went pretty well. We had fairly good participation in that. In fact, I think we'll do more and more of that in the future. It just seems to be more convenient. In-person was always nice, but you can't beat the convenience of, of online webinars and people's ability to attend. Um, let's see, inventory and assessment. So we finally finalized, finished up the full lakes and watershed assessment. I submitted that report to the WMO, and I imagine at some point they can review it with you in terms of some of the results, or I can at their request, whatever is their pleasure. But anyway, we identify a number of different types of practices throughout the watershed that what we would prioritize for cost share projects and targeted outreach in that report. And we're starting to embark on the sub watershed assessment, which will do the same thing for Roberts Creek. Identify priority areas and practices for implementation to address water quality issues in Roberts Creek there, south of Bell Plain and throughout the Blakely and Bell Plain Township areas. Uh, let's see, skipping down, uh, water quality, there, um, there's not really any activity. We kind of closed up shop on the monitoring, if you will, for Pika Creek, which is where most of our time was spent. We did gather one more round of observation while monitoring, looking at water levels throughout the county. That was the final time for this year as well. Rainfall monitoring, this is volunteer data we collect throughout the county. You can see in December, we had slightly below average precipitation. We just basically convert the snowfall into the rainfall equivalent, equivalent. Construction erosion control, these are inspections we do, but indicated by the bars. So you see, we had slightly over, or slightly under 150 inspections were completed. The purple line indicates plan reviews along the right axis. You can see that dropdown, which is typical for this time of year. We had 10 plan reviews. Those are new, new permanent applications. The buffer law, we mailed, um, letters of potential non-compliance to two landowners. So we completed our one-third of the county review of compliance, and we end up with, uh, just two landowners, one in Prior Lake and one down. I can't remember where it was, in the WMO, but one was in Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District, one was in the WMO. But we don't anticipate any issues with working with these landowners. Sometimes it's an oversight. One, for example, was a hay field, and so it was compliant as long as it was hay, but they converted from hay to corn and forgot to leave the, the hay along the, the water course intact. So that was just an oversight. Um, let's see, tree programs. So we launched our, our website sale on January 1, and we've already sold over, over, uh, half of all our stock, and we have more than half the orders that we normally have throughout the four, four-month order period. So, um, there's some pent-up demand out there and a lot of eagerness to get out and do different things, apparently. Cooperative weed management, so we closed up, closed out a 2019 grant, and our focus has been on trying to curtail the expansion of, of wild parsnip. We had a couple of mowing and spraying operations throughout the county, and we feel that we're actually getting control of wild parsnip throughout the county through these efforts. And that's just good news. It's not a lot of, very little related to water quality and the purpose of the WPC, but I think it's important, kind of, bellwether, if you will, is the ability to address resource concerns if you can get ahead of them. Appears to be the case. So we're looking forward to keeping, uh, keeping that in check throughout the county. Well, in Conservation Act, we basically rounded up a number of applications for the year. These are notices of decisions for different, various types of applications for wetland-related work. Um, I'll move down to Equipment Rental Program, Ryan. You'll see we hit above our 2,000-acre mark for the Equipment Rental Program, nearly reaching the 2019 levels, which was record level. So the last two years, we've had banner years. This equipment goes out to do conservation-type plantings, whether it's no-till or conservation cover seedings, a perennial vegetation. So the more we see that equipment usage, the more we know conservation's being done on the ground. Finally, we'll move on to the tables on the following page. So these are actions taken by the Soil and Water Board, both in December and January. I included December because obviously you didn't have a meeting to report last month. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine applications for new contracts totaling a little less than $27,000. And there's one amendment. We reduced the amount of WBF funds on that particular project because we found another source of funding to utilize. And then on the payment side, we made almost $31,000 worth of payments on contracts within the WMO area. Anything that's marked with an asterisk has a corresponding fact sheet that follows on the subsequent pages. With that, Madam Chair, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions from anyone?
Commissioner Weaver, I have one question for Troy, if it's okay. Troy, uh, past meetings, I brought up the issue of what your process is going to be, what the county is going to think about doing in terms of the Helena Wetland Bank, in terms of any potential access, a potential ability to have it as an educational experience for people, and how that may or may not relate to any, uh, ability to restrict any kind of hunting on that land. Have you any more thought to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pence. Um, so we, we are kind of in the early phases of the project, obviously, and we wanted to kind of hold off on opening any of the land up until we know we're in good shape with respect to meeting some of the performance standards that are required in order to get the credits approved. Those performance standards relate to vegetation, a certain percent cover and diversity, and, and very limited invasive or non-native species. Another aspect is hydrology. Make sure we have water levels where they need to be to support the hydroic vegetation and wetland characteristics of the site. So being that we're still so early in the stage, we weren't kind of getting into opening that land up. We certainly have it available for education purposes and will intend to use it. But I'm looking at probably more in, in a year or two down the line before we start addressing those types of things.
Thank you for the clarification, Troy. That's good.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions for Troy? Okay, thank you, Troy. I think we can move on to the Scott WMO report from Vanessa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Um, I think I just want to start out by welcoming back Commissioners Shay and Commissioners Beerling. Both of those were reappointed for their next term as WPC Commissioners, so our roster is the same as it was last year, which is wonderful for me, who's newer. Um, uh, but more importantly, we really appreciate all your time and effort and hard work. Means a lot to us when you're willing to come back and continue your volunteer effort. So, you know, we do this as, as a job and as a passion, but you're doing this as a volunteer, and, and we need you. You're a critical component to how we function, how we connect with our community, and you help provide us really important guidance and direction. So we'd like to be really thankful that, that those two are willing to come back, so. Um, a couple of different housekeeping, uh, things that we've been working on at the county. For those of you who are more familiar with the construction that's been going on, uh, there's a very large, wonderful, new government center. Being called Government Center West Building. It's the new courthouse building. Um, and in conjunction with that is actually a renovation of the original Government Center Building, Government Center East, as it's called. And that's where, uh, Natural Resources Staff is housed, as well as the Environmental Staff is housed, as well as obviously the Boardroom and all that. So as part of that effort, we actually have to all be moved out, uh, the beginning of March so that they can fully renovate that whole building. So for the next year, um, from March until, you know, basically December of this year, staff will be temporarily housed in the new Government Center Building and also working from home, continuing to do that. The reason why we offered to just use teleworking and satellite stations for our team was because I, I thought about the cost savings, obviously, to the county. Why put up full cubes for all of us when frankly, it's, it's a cost you don't need when it's temporary? Put those, put those resources towards staff that really must be there every day. So we'll just be using satellite stations. But that also means the Boardroom will be under construction, which also means that obviously the WPC will continue to meet virtually for the next year as well. Part of that move also includes us going through all of our files and folders, all of our hard copy items that we've been collecting over the years, and deciding whether or not they're relevant anymore, whether or not, you know, we need to follow a retention policy. And for those that we don't need to hold on to anymore, we're getting rid of those. Those that we do, we're working on getting those scanned, and then we actually have to box everything up and then get it ready to be either moved into cold storage or moved into temporary storage. So it's actually a very large effort that staff's been going through for the last several months, but it's really picking up now. Which is also why we're really grateful to have Dominique on board. So it's a lot trickier when you have COVID and you can't all be there at the same time, kind of going through things. So although you don't see it, that is a rather large staff effort that we're going through right now. Uh, in addition, the county has started launching some excellent new software programs to help connect better with our residents and help improve efficiency at the county. One of them is the Civic Clerk Program, which is how we are now entering RVAs and board packets. And the reason I bring that up is because eventually our watershed commission packets will be on there as well. So that'll be nice. You'll just log into the system and be able to access your packets that way. But it just launched for January and I'm pretty excited about it. So I've used similar programs other, all places, and it's worked out really, really well. Another, uh, really good application, which Ryan will actually get into here in a little bit, is our No Wait Inside application. We're one of the test groups for the county, because again, we're a smaller unit, which allows us to be a little bit easier of a test group. What No Wait Inside is, is it allows our residents and our business owners and all the folks that we work with here in the county to be able to access and schedule appointments and, uh, meet with staff, maybe that need to come into the building, but then you don't have to stand there outside and debate online, right? You can go online, you can schedule your appointment online for the time and date that you want, and the staff is ready to come out and help and meet you. So it improves efficiency, it improves safety. It, it's excellent all around. Um, and then, of course, the traditional ways of scheduling are still available for those who don't necessarily want to use an app or technology, just pick up the phone. So, uh, we're testing that as well. Again, Ryan will kind of talk about that a little bit more as well. Obviously, it's the end-of-year financing and time for us as well, so we get really busy this time of year. It's quiet outside, but it's busy for us, so we got to wrap up 2020. Yay, 2020 wrapped up, okay? And, uh, get it all boxed up and, and ready for, um, putting to bed, which is nice. Uh, so it's a pretty big time for us. We have a lot of interview reporting for our grants as well. We have grants, obviously, right now at PCA. We have these grants with Bowser, so we, we have a lot of grants, so obviously we're closing out. We're also, uh, working on amendments for both of our major grants, just to try to utilize the rest of our funds where possible. But those amendments can be very time-consuming, just to try to make sure we move categories from maybe, if we have maybe a little too much in, in technical assistance, and we can shift it to education and still get that used, that's great. You know, those are the kinds of amendments that we're trying to do right now, just to get the last of those grant funds, rather than having to return them, because obviously nobody wants to return grant funds if they don't have to, and we can put it to good use right here in the county. Uh, in addition to that, Troy and I were, uh, really, really thoughtfully asked to participate in Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District's, uh, technical panel for their interviews for their new Watershed District Administrator. So, uh, I know I found that you're very, again, thoughtful, very kind that you reached out to us. So, uh, along with the Water Resource Managers for our local municipalities, we did sit in on those interview panels here last couple of weeks ago, was it a couple of weeks ago? Try not to say it. Uh, so that was, um, it was very interesting. It was very well thought out, but that was a, a nice way to work on that partnership and, and continue that going on. So it was a little PS. Last two things, the board did adopt the new FEMA floodplain panels and ordinance on January 19. Obviously, we're required to do that and have it completed by February 12, so we're on schedule and on time. There will be some changes. Most of the changes to the overall FEMA map and program are, are wonderful as far as accessibility, ability to submit, um, letters of map adjustment. All of that is, is really, really improved, and I'm really excited about it. The other piece of that is obviously there are always some adjustments with the new maps based upon the newest data. So, uh, we'll likely take in a bit more, uh, calls and information from residents as they start getting their new map letters, uh, from their insurance companies and their mortgage holders. Uh, and then the last effort that we are currently working on is the One Watershed, One Plan Planning effort. And this is in conjunction with Rice and the Seward Counties primarily, but it's also a large swath of area that includes, you know, Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District, Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, parts of Dakota, actually goes all the way up into cap region. That's just kind of the drainage area that we're in, and so we have to decide as a group what is actually going to be the working drainage area. So I'll be coming to you in February with some map, a couple of map options, um, to ask for some input and recommendations for. After that, uh, we'll ask for a, probably a volunteer who might be willing to assist on that policy team. So because this is a large policy and planning effort, it does require participation from our boards and commissions. It goes above and beyond staff. Now, obviously, we'll be there to help you, but it does need that input, and it's critical to get that input at decision-making level. So those are the, uh, larger things that I just wanted to bring up. Obviously, Ryan and Melissa will also be discussing the details of what they've been working on in their program areas. And at this time, I stand for any questions?
Any questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, I think we can probably move on. Looks like next is, we'll move to ongoing business and project updates from Ryan.
And Chair Commissioners, good evening. Actually, just have a real brief, um, few items here to go through. One is, if you remember, at past meetings, we talked about doing some maintenance on a few projects, and we have completed all but two. And one of those was, uh, our first phase of our stream bank stabilizations, Phase 1 is what we had called it. And we are working with our Public Works Department on, um, the potential fix. We did reach out to the DNR about, um, you know, we had a permit that we initially, before starting the project, needed to obtain through the DNR. And so I'm seeing is all the work is really at the OHW or below. We're playing on adding rock to one of the structures that catalog snap off. We reached out to the new area hydrologist, and she mentioned that in the past, they would do verbal kind of agreements to be able to do maintenance, but there is actually a process now. So we will be applying for an amendment through their, uh, online, uh, application, and then hopefully we'll have the green light to continue to move forward. Ideally, it would be nice to actually fix that, uh, in the winter here. The second one, um, that we still have maintenance on, and in this one, we knew we weren't going to be able to get to in the fall, is, uh, a buffer near the new preg area that had a large, um, area of it where the trees did not grow it. We, we believe it was an herbicide carryover issue where we were trying to knock back some reed canary, and the herbicide actually ended up carrying over and killing our trees. So whatever that was, we could certainly use it for, um, you know, keep it in mind for any times where we need to try to kill off reed canary because it did a good job, but unfortunately, uh, that wasn't the intent of it. So, um, and as Troy stated, their tree- um, and as Troy stated, their trees are going fast. So this is kind of my, uh, reminder to get our tree order in so we don't miss the boat on, on getting those replacement trees. Um, Commissioner Schmidt had a great idea at our tour, um, in the fall, and that was to highlight some of the wetland restoration projects that have been going on in the county. And so we had wrote an article for our Scott County scene and, uh, at the, um, bi-monthly meetings that the SWCD invites me to attend where we get to see all the requests that are coming in. There was quite a few of them that mentioned that scene article as, um, piquing their interest for wetland restoration. So it was pretty successful. And what it also led to was because a lot of those projects were in the Bell Plain area. Um, Commissioner Schmidt, once again, had the great idea of reaching out to the Bell Plain Herald, the local newspaper, and seeing if there'd be an interest in running an article, um, on that. And they did have an interest, but they wanted to write it themselves. So we worked with them, um, Commissioner Schmidt, uh, Colin Scheniker at the Soil and Water Office and two of the landowners that had projects that were approved and both of them came to the WPC in 2020. Agreed to be in the article. And so after this meeting, um, I was going to send the link to that article for anybody who is interested in, um, reading it. So it, it turned out really well. Um, hopefully, uh, and it ran in December. I, I haven't seen any, um, new requests come in, um, that are citing that article, but, um, there still could be, you know. So hopefully that, you know, the, that's the goal of, of those, uh, articles is to generate interest, interest and show everybody, um, in the area, all the good things that, that are being done. And finally, yes, go ahead.
I would just like to thank, say thank you to you and the staff, everybody that put the effort into helping with that article. Uh, they did a very nice job and, and getting and also having, um, the participants uh, and the landowners participate in that. That was, uh, very, it was a very good article. It really promoted, you know, getting in contact with the county to, you know, if you're looking to do something with your land and, and restore it that way, uh, that, you know, the county has the place to go and they'll work with you to do that. And, and the Herald is, um, looking to do an article in the spring again to, to show those projects off. Once they, you know, grown in and, and waters in them and stuff. So they're going to do a follow-up also. So thanks again, Brian.
I mean, Chair Commissioner Schmidt, yeah. Um, I think that's good for the interest that we've had. You know, getting several people calling in, uh, and wanting to explore wetlands on their property. I think it's certainly worth running, um, another article on the scene in the spring. And um, sometimes it's just about timing and, and maybe this is a good year or, or it's, you know, a good, good practice that, um, can be moved. So we'll, we'll keep trying, um, for a while here and, and see if we can't get some more projects. Uh, last update was the no wait inside program. Um, this was the one where a couple of weeks ago, I sent out a link for people to try it. Um, and I realize you're busy time of the year for everybody and, and maybe not everyone's had a chance to look at it. So if you haven't and you do want to look at it, um, the nice thing is we have the ability to make changes on the fly. Um, with it, the program is really strong in some areas, um, as in office visits. Um, it, it's not really designed for field visits. Um, so what the program allows you to do is any resident can go online and book an appointment to meet with us. And why it works well for the office is if we've got somebody in the office that's available. The short, uh, visits coming to our front counter and, and discussing, um, some sort of matter, whether it be a stormwater question or, you know, a conservation question. Those are pretty easily handled. Um, the area where it's a little tougher is the field visits because a lot of times there's, there's a lot of research that goes into, um, an inquiry and wanting us to come out to uh, look at something on their property, whether it's a drainage issue, um, or something conservation or erosion related. We like to come well-prepared for those meetings with as much background information as possible. And that program could allow somebody to book an appointment in 10 minutes from now and in New Market. Uh, and it's just not really feasible for us to be able to, you know, kind of drop everything and, and head to the site. As in, in timing wise, we can't even drive. That would be alarming to make it there that quickly. So, um, so we've set it up to where if you did try it, um, the biggest piece I was trying to, um, get back from folks is, is it apparent that a field visit cannot be booked online? It's, it's, we've sort of made modifications to it that does not allow somebody to book an appointment online, that those we would book over the phone. And the next thing about the program is any, um, requests, whether they're an office visit or a, uh, site visit can be done over the phone. And then we as staff log that request. And that's the direction the county would like to go is, um, logging any of these site visits into the program. So if people do the more traditional or historic way of calling in, then we take their information and that's easier to find a time then. Um, that works with staff because there could also be a question might be better suited for one staff's, um, experience or, or area of expertise versus another staff. And so with our schedules being different, it just, um, lends itself to be easier to, to book those, um, through the phone. So if anybody does have comments now, I'd certainly, um, write them down and we can make adjustments. Otherwise, if you do have the time and, and you go in and book an appointment, um, and you notice something, um, I know staff started to notice a few things that we made adjustments to. Reach out at any point and, um, we'll make the, uh, the change. The goal is to go live, um, this week. So we have the green light to start whenever we want. It's, it's actually live right now. Um, but we have not advertised that link. So unless somebody got it through a staff member, um, it's, it's not on our website. So come, uh, maybe Wednesday or Thursday of this week, we will put it on our website and then, um, we'll start taking appointments that way.
Ryan, the one piece I would add as the, uh, other purpose behind this was that even though we are a small department and we all work face-to-face with residents, it can be kind of tricky for residents to understand who to call and when, which one of us is the best. Uh, so this is to really continue to try to improve that front-facing public service, uh, side of, of our little team and make sure that folks just have the one number that they know that they can call to, that will get to all of us. Uh, because that's something that is always kind of been harder for us to have, and especially moving forward uh, for the next year with not having, uh, permanent stations and, and everything. We really just want to continue to work on that front-facing public, um, accessibility side of us. So that was another piece of that. Sorry, Ryan.
No, Madam Chair Commissioners, that, no, it's good to, um, give that, uh, information to in, in the background. And it's, um, spurred another thought here that partly why this program is in place is due to, um, COVID going on. And, and so what it's meant to do is, uh, residents can only access the uh, building via an appointment. So unless you have an appointment, um, the government center isn't open. So the program now basically through a series of text messages, um, that once you book it, it's sort of letting us know as staff, that person has arrived to the county. And we are then, um, supposed to meet them at the door to let them have access inside the building. So that's another big piece of why this program is being, um, unveiled is, um, that, for that reason. And, um, we also have screening questions, which, um, will be interesting too. So you are required, if you book an appointment, you have to answer, um, screening questions an hour uh, before the appointment starts, or maybe it's two hours, but basically that you're not showing any signs of, uh, or any symptoms um, of COVID. So that way, you know, we're keeping safety in mind of, uh, with staff and the residents that if they are, you know, feeling some symptoms, then, then we reschedule at that point, that they can't continue with their appointment. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Ryan? Okay, I think we can move on to Melissa's program updates.
Forgot to unmute myself here. Um, my notes, um, our aquatic invasive species prevention program. Um, the plan was updated for the next two years, um, for this year, 2021 through 2022. And it was approved by the county board at their December 15th meeting. I did have a virtual meeting with the representatives and partners, um, for that planning group, which is the Cedar Lake Improvement District, the O'Dowd Lake Chain Association and the Parleak Spring Lake Watershed District. So a few minor changes were made to that. Um, I also completed an annual report to the DNR on the AIS prevention uh, program funds. So there, it's a report of a bunch of different metrics of, um, where the money went to and what we did. I have that report along with the AIS prevention plan on our website. It's actually under the natural resources page. Um, if anybody would like, uh, me to set out a link so that you can find that, I'd be happy to do that. Just let me know. Um, you can see on the agenda, we have this savage local water plan coming up in, in just a little bit. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that with all now, with all the local water plan updates, um, we've all, we've reviewed and approved the WMO, all of them now. Um, the only exception is the city of New Prague. Because they're not part of the metropolitan council, a water plan is optional for them at this point. We did inquire with them in 2020 to see if they were going to be updating their last plan because they did, um, do a plan in, like 2007 or 2008, we reviewed it and approved it. And I even remember, um, they amended the plan in 2011 and we approved that. Um, their response was that they're not sure if they're going to update it, um, but they'll let me know if they do. We have started, I've been working with Shelby Roberts from SWCD on, if you remember, last month I talked about the amendments that we were doing to the watershed-based funding grant. There was a category we were creating for chloride equipment. Um, and so Shelby put together a nice, oh, I guess I can't share that with you. Um, Shelby put together a really nice marketing flyer for that. Um, and a grant application for that equipment. So we've got just over 29,000 available for private contractors, um, school districts, churches, you know, any kind of nonprofits to, um, use up to $3,000 towards chloride reduction equipment that would, um, examples would be like if they want to change from using salt granules to, um, going to brine, or if they want to use a shield, that's kind of a more, direct application. So they don't have a lot of, um, uh, spreading of the salt across the roadway and bouncing off the road. So it's more, Bowser approved more. Um, very specific equipment. So, um, I'll be reviewing those applications and I'll actually be kind of checking on them once they do purchase them. Just, just kind of a quality assurance thing for us. But they will be required also to submit their salt savings to us at the end of the year. Now this grant does expire at the end of this year. Um, but in order to get that grant money, they have to agree to, um, to give us that information on their salt savings by the end of the season. So, uh, the last thing is I did talk about an urban BMP activity, um, that we were developing from that, um, chloride grant amendment. Um, so those guidelines have been developed. Um, we have a total of about $32,000 that, and that activity really, uh, includes implementing practices that address impacts associated with development. So, um, projects would be targeted, um, that um, that abate erosion or runoff, um, that includes phosphorus or sediment from impervious surfaces. So, um, we put down that we'd have probably three to four projects. Um, and we include, so that was really meant to help implement, um, practices that might come out of other studies that this whole grant was paying for, such as the city Savage was doing a, um, Twin Lakes volume reduction study. Um, there was, we now have a couple of new, um, sub watershed assessments. Um, so we're hoping to find three to four projects this year because it really has to be done this year. Um, and we're kind of giving everybody a deadline of, we want to have it installed and certified by October of this year to make sure we have enough time to get all the capable reimbursements done into those off the grant. So I'm handing that off to Ryan at this point because a lot of the projects or eligible practices that we put in there are a lot of the same practices that are in our tax docket. There are some that aren't, um, like tree trenches or, um, turf management. Um, so Ryan's going to be looking into, um, kind of some per- performance standards for those. And anything that's kind of unusual, uh, we'll probably have Megan take a look at, Megan Tosca. Um, otherwise the SWCD, um, can definitely take a look at the, the, the egg-based practices and, um, for that grant. So, um, that's really all I have at this point. If you have any questions, let me know.
Questions for Melissa? Okay, let's move on to new business and Ryan with the tax re-enrollment rate.
The Chair Commissioners, uh, so we, uh, did have our docket approved. Excuse me, in, um, December, the WMO board, uh, approved it. And with that, uh, if you remember, we were adding re-enrollments as a potential. Uh, however, our comp plan is very specific that the goal of the program is to not really focus on re-enrollments. And so we, um, felt as though we, we wanted to have some amount of flexibility uh, with that, but also reducing the budget, uh, for what we could put forth towards re-enrollment. So what we've essentially done is, um, set a, a cap to it. And we chose staff, uh, had met and, um, we came up with $20,000, which is about 6% of the tax, um, program budget for '21. So a very small amount of, of money. Um, and it doesn't necessarily mean we're obligated to, uh, spend it on re-enrollments if there isn't a project that, um, comes in the door that we want to spend it on. Um, so I, I won't go through the verbiage that we had in the docket, but essentially we've given ourselves the flexibility to choose whichever rate we want to apply for these practices. And, um, with the docket, we also established a land rental rate, which is at $200 a acre. So for, uh, native grass projects, that's the maximum anybody can get is the $200 a acre. I should back up. The, the two practices that we have that would, um, have re-enrollments coming in are native grasses and filter strips. The rest of the practices we offer, there isn't an opportunity to, uh, re-enroll those. So we're just talking about those two practices. And they're starting to come up for expiration. Uh, another thing that we had, um, as criteria is if there is an opportunity such as CRP for a filter strip or a native grass planting to, um, enter into, then if there is other funding opportunities, then we wouldn't offer the funds, um, the, the WMO funds for that type of re-enrollment either. So we're really we're really limiting it to landowners who do not have other options out there. And then obviously wouldn't be required with the buffer law too. So with all that being said, in the land rental rate that we currently have at two hundred dollars an acre, this item is intended to be a discussion to go through options and just bounce those off of all the commissioners and see what number that seems to fit. Or if there's other suggestions or ideas. There are folks that are already requesting, you know, to apply for these funds. And so the sooner we can establish some parameters, the easier it is for the SWCD staff to relay those to landowners so they can get a better idea. You know, is it something that they even want to do? They may decide that the rate doesn't fit with what they want and they could choose to, you know, use the land for whatever use beyond what it currently is. So I just laid out three different options just to have something on paper to go through and what those options then lead to. So option one would be a hundred and fifty dollars an acre. And the adjusted budget is, is to account for, we have twenty thousand dollars in the re-enrollment kind of account, if you want to break it down that way. And it's two thousand because they're ten-year contracts. So what it's meant to do is, I'm just trying to show everybody with each of these rates, what is your ultimate outcome going to be? How many acres can you re-enroll at that rate? With the current budget that we've set for it. So option one at a hundred and fifty dollars per acre for ten-year contracts, we would be able to re-enroll thirteen acres of filter strips and/or native grasses. Option two, hundred dollars an acre, we can enroll twenty acres, sorry, re-enroll twenty acres into the program. And then option three was seventy five dollars an acre and we'd be able to re-enroll twenty seven acres at that rate. Kind of the last piece of information that I think it's worth noting, the SWCD Board also reviewed this to see what they felt was appropriate. And they do have one member of their board that's in the ag community and they felt as though a hundred dollars an acre seemed to be the best option to go with. Less than that was maybe a little too low and obviously the two hundred dollars an acre is a maximum that we give out and you know, going higher than a hundred dollars an acre, you know, you might not be all that different from some of the projects that are coming in new. So it's that fine line of what, what seems to fit. And I think that after this year, going through the process, we might have better information next year. So with that, I'll open it up for discussions with with everybody just to see how they feel. And we don't have to go along with these three options. I just throwing them out there for discussion purposes.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll open it up first. Anyone else have questions or comments to start us out?
Commissioner Weaver, this is Virgil. Yes, Ryan, I like the work that you've done. You've done a nice job laying everything out here for us. You know, the question always is, once it's enrolled, do you need to provide a financial incentive to have them re-enroll? Because if you don't, is there, how big is the risk that they might take it out of that practice, right? So that's the fine line we're trying to balance here because by using money for re-enrollment, it eliminates potentially money that we have for a new enrollment. So my bias has always been to minimize the amount of payment we authorize for re-enrollment, hoping that most of their participants would not take it out of production and take it, you know, take it out of conservation, put it into production, even if there wasn't incentive. So I would favor, actually, my preference would probably be seventy five, but I'd be okay with a hundred.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinn.
I'll jump in with my questions if that's okay. So I'm wondering how many acres are up for re-enrollment now that would probably take advantage of this? Pay for?
It's a great question. So we, we can get those numbers and we can certainly come back to the next meeting with them. We currently are not advertising the re-enrollments. We're not sending out a letter right now. In maybe, you know, the commissioners see or feel differently that we maybe should notify everybody, but currently we're not. So we don't, short answer is we don't have an exact number. To put it into perspective, we have one project that came in in January, thirteen point eight acres. So we look at that. At option one, we can't fund that one project. So in the end, there's probably dozens that might be up for re-enrollment and we can probably fund a handful is about it. And really what we're trying to do, that Commissioner Pinn touched on a little bit, is that we're looking for ones that have a really high public benefit. And that's where if there isn't any, it might not make sense to even re-enroll any of them that are on the list and wanting to. I mean, it's kind of at that two-way street where for us, the benefit would be to be high to the public to reinvest money into a practice where, you know, we've laid out our plan and we've said it several times, our goal is behavioral change and not sustain it. And so that's why we're really trying to limit this.
And that was going to be my next question to clarify. So each one of these that come up for re-enrollment, you would evaluate and decide whether or not it had enough public benefit to even pay them anything, right?
I'm sure, yes. So we set up ranking and batching meetings throughout the year. And that's since we've, in more recent years, ran out of funds. And so we're trying to fund the projects that have the highest benefit. Ideally, we'd like to fund them all, but in reality, we just may not be able to. So with the re-enrollment projects that have already shown interest, we have put those on hold. So we had a meeting in January and we didn't feel as though that's the appropriate time to decide on whether they should move forward because there could be a better project that comes in in October. And if we've allocated the funds for it, for example, the thirteen point eight acre project and something comes in the door that was, had a better public benefit, well, we've already then, you know, used up the funds for that project. So in reality, we probably will just continue to maintain a list of these projects as they come in the door and review them maybe summer at the earliest, probably more so fall as other funds are dwindling. We have a clearer picture than of the, you know, the rest of the year and probably, you know, if they haven't reached out by then, they might not. So I think timing is important to push that down the road to one, let as many landowners as possible throw their, their project in a hat, so to speak, and not allocate those funds earlier if you're allowing maybe something with better benefits to come in the door.
So I will add, while I agree with Virgil, I wouldn't want to see them continuing to have this paid for. The way that you're ranking and approaching it, since you already know the ones you want to pay for re-enrollment are high benefit, I'd almost say, pay what we need to to keep them enrolled over picking maybe a new project that doesn't make as much sense. That's just my thoughts on it.
It's good points, you know, because we don't, you know, we're kind of going into this a little blind because this is the first year and that's why I said the comment of this year, we're probably and I certainly see it being adjusted or one surprised me, I guess, if it's adjusted next year to better accommodate things. So I see both sides of it, you know, we could go after a very small amount of projects and at the one fifty rate, it might be more advantageous for them. At seventy five, they may say no, and we have to be okay with that too. So I, you know, I struggle with this as well, with the
This is Commissioner Casilius. I do have one question too. Do we have a sense for people that are in the program that you feel would not continue the program? So we would use it as an enticement for them to stay in rather than people who come to us and just want to and they, and rather than making everyone know that there's, you know, renewal dollars available, but rather than, you know, approach it to say, well, gosh, you know, we really want this person to stay in the program, but they're, we're sensing they're not going to?
Great question. I'm Chair Commissioner Casilius. So we did, and it might take a little bit to pull it up to get the exact number, but we did an aerial photo review of projects that have already expired. And just to see from an aerial photo, did they leave them in? Did they take them out? And it was quite high that people left them in. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but Troy could interject if he does, but I think it was somewhere in the range of maybe eighty to ninety percent, maybe even higher than ninety percent. Because I do recall that the ones that stood the highest chance of being pulled out were if they changed ownership. So if the person we had under contract sold their land, those ones had a much higher percentage of being pulled out after that contract expired. They just maybe weren't as invested into it. It wasn't their idea to begin with. Maybe they purchased it with the understanding that it was going to come out and that they could do something else with that at some point. So so from we have so far in the numbers, it is likely that, you know, the trend that we have is that they'll keep it in, but that could change. We don't have a lot of data, you know, we're talking about maybe four or five years, you know, is all to pull off of. So and we'll continue to do that every year just to keep building up that, that database of information to see if after we've established a re-enrollment project and somebody put their hat in the ring and did they take it out after that? Did they not? You know, we'll, we'll continue to follow up because I think it's important for us to adapt with this and see if we're doing things, you know, the way that we feel we should.
I will just add one more piece, Madam Chair Commissioners, and that's just to again reiterate that to be consistent with the plan, obviously, re-enrollment is not there to keep these, keep our, keep our residents in the program. The purpose of the program is to develop stewardship and turn over that stewardship to the landowner. So obviously, per our plan, we have no intention of ever continuing these long-term. But as Ryan has said, over time, especially when some of our really targeted and prioritized areas transfer ownership, we need to really have an opportunity to reach out to those new owners or reoccurring landowners to try to save some of those really key areas. And that's really what this is for. It's, it's you know, ninety-five percent of this program is for new projects. But this is, this is for those few really targeted and prioritized areas that staff between the SWMO staff and the SWCD staff really feel we would hope to keep in if we can and need a way to reach out to those targeted residents. So I just want to reiterate that one key piece there, that it isn't a one for all, everybody can come in and re-enroll if they feel like a type of program. It is going to be very targeted and intentional. And to be consistent with our plan, which is to always be inspiring new stewardship, not to sustain them ongoing. And the only reason why they participate is because they're getting money. So.
So that, that kind of gets to the, where I was going with my question, probably didn't do it terribly smoothly, but at any rate, that would lend me to say that I would not think seventy five dollars would be enough to achieve that goal. Then if somebody, you know, if it has changed hands, I would probably look at one of the upper figures, either a hundred or even a hundred and fifty at that stage of the game. Depending on, you know, the priority of the project, you know, in the, in the group size.
I, you know, the staff is clearly open. We would ask though that the commissioners do make a recommendation for staff to move forward. That would be the, the next step once the discussion part is over.
Thanks Vanessa. Go ahead, Ryan.
Madam Chair, so I did pull up the, the actual numbers. So native grasses is a newer program and we only had two that have already expired. And so they both are still currently in. So none have been removed for native grasses and ninety-two percent stayed in for filter strips. And there's, there's quite a bit on the filter strip side of things. There was a significant amount more projects that we looked at. So that, that's probably a better number. Looks like it was about a hundred filter ship contracts that had expired. And ninety-two percent stayed in. And the ones that did get removed, that was a thirty-five percent of those had an ownership change. So I think that's kind of a telling statistic in this too.
Other thing that Madam Chair I might add is that with with the onset of the buffer law, there might have been a lot of filter strips that basically had to stay in place because of that law.
Any other comments or feedback for Ryan? Sorry, I had a kid step in and ask me a question. I guess we, we do need to make a recommendation to you, right? And I, I guess I'm I'm still feeling if staff looks like it, looks at them closely, it feels like these are high priority areas, we should pay what's necessary. I mean, almost up to the, I would even say up to what we offer, the two hundred per acre to enroll if we really want to keep them in. That's my thoughts on that. I don't know if we want to debate some more, Virgil, if you have, want to jump back in. I know you were, you were thinking lower.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Pinn. Thanks, Commissioner Weaver. No, I understand all the arguments. I do. And I, and I think we definitely need to, to make a recommendation here to staff. So I would feel comfortable making a motion at a hundred dollars an acre. And again, you know, if they're truly incent, if they're truly motivated due to whether it be ownership change or whatever, to take it out of, out of conservation, then they, even one fifty might not be enough, right? So what I'm trying to eliminate is people who are going to leave it in anyway. But hey, what the heck, if I can get an extra money for renewing, I'm going to take it. And that's just kind of, I think that's kind of human nature, I suppose. So I'm trying to figure out a way to get as much, as many acres as possible. So I won't make a motion yet. I'd like to get a consensus here, but, but I would still like to look at the hundred dollar acre. Thanks.
So to clarify, I mean, I think it makes sense that you're not contacting people to say, hey, you're up, want to consider re-enrollment. It would be more you see that they've taken it out after their time period has expired. Or, or they approach you, right?
Madam Chair, so so far it's just when they're approaching us. That's our current protocol. We could change that. We could start notifying people.
You should notify. I think you should wait till they, they come in and ask. I think that makes sense.
Sure. And we've gone several years now where, you know, there's, there's projects that expired in twenty sixteen. Sure. And and we've gone um several years now where, you know, there's there's projects that expired in twenty sixteen. Um and, you know, um Troy could speak on this, but I don't know that a lot of those landowners, you know, because we didn't have anything in place, that they didn't reach out. Um so yeah, but but there are some trickling in now.
And I I can get on board with a hundred, and I think we just watch it and see, you know, if it ends up not being enough, um make a decision from there. But I think that makes sense to just start there, too.
Okay, Commissioner Weaver, this is Commissioner Pence again. Then I would make a motion that we recommend the one hundred dollar an acre rate for renewals as they get reviewed by staff.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Veerling, I would agree with that and do second on the one hundred dollars.
All right, I will do roll, Madam Chair. I'll take myself off of mute to do that, too. Uh, Commissioner Weaver.
Was that me? I'm sorry, you kind of went out.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Ed, Commissioner Veerling.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is passed, and I think we can move on to Melissa with the Savage Local Water Plan.
And then, Madam Chair, I do have one point of order. I apologize. Uh Melissa did have a little summary of the twenty twenty uh program. So if uh you don't mind, she's going to jump and do that really quick and then I'll move on to the Savage Local Water Plan um action item. So uh she'll do the ongoing business under item V and item number C, twenty twenty water craft inspection report, and then she'll just move to the Savage Local Water Plan under item six.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Ryan, can you share the PowerPoint, please? Okay, great. Um so I just have a few slides to go through. It's just kind of a broad overview of the twenty twenty uh watercraft inspection year. We had five um accesses that we had inspectors at, and we, again, contracted with Water uh Waterfront Restorations. You can go to the next slide. Um I just wanted to quickly show you again some of the questions that the inspectors ask when people are um at the access and trying to enter the lake. Um you know, they they do ask, you know, how long has your watercraft been out of the water? Because it is, um they're supposed to keep it out of the water for at least five days before they enter another water body. Um and they do they do ask, you know, what was the last water body you visited? That helps kind of track if we do end up getting like a new infestation. It helps track where what water body they were in um and to know if that was an infested water. And then they, you know, they do ask, you know, what what water body are you going to next? Um and it's interesting in the full report that a lot of people answered that that we're coming out of Cedar Lake, that they're going to go back into Cedar Lake the next time they go out on the lake. So Cedar Lake's a pretty popular lake. Um and then some of the observations that they ask, you know, there's lots of different uh metrics that they take, but watercraft type, you know, they're looking for violations. So do they do they come to the access with the drain plug in or out upon arrival? And then they're also looking for plants and any kind of animals attached to the trailer or the boat. And they do take down license plate numbers and and the state that the vehicle came from. So next slide, please. So for twenty twenty, um the total number of inspections, I can't see my uh I got to get the pictures out of my hair. Um the total number of inspections that were completed for twenty twenty was three thousand three hundred ninety-four. Um you can see on this graph here, the number of inspections per lake or per access, and then the number of hours, inspection hours that were done on each of those accesses. Because of COVID and because it took a little bit longer to get the uh agreement in place with the vendor, inspections didn't actually start until July second and went through the end of September. So they got a total of, you know, three thousand three hundred ninety-four inspections done and one thousand fifty-nine inspection hours in. Now to compare that to last year, last year, um they had a little bit more inspection hours, one thousand twelve hundred thirty-four. But the number of actual inspections that were done was two thousand seven hundred nineteen. So we got over a thousand more inspections done. So there was a lot more people on lakes in twenty twenty. Uh next slide, please. Um so from the survey data, um we determined that the busiest month for watercraft inspections was August um with about one thousand four hundred twenty-six um completed inspections. July followed close by at one thousand one hundred eighty-five inspections logged. Um and as you call throughout the season, there's a natural decline in boater traffic as, you know, summer weather turns into autumn. But this graph just kind of shows, you know, how many inspections per week and the number of hours per week. And as you can see in July, you know, that week of July, um kind of around the holiday was the highest count of inspections at about three hundred and ninety-one. Next slide, please. Um again, you know, they track, we track to to kind of get an idea of when um, you know, when the lakes are really busy, when are the accesses busy? And obviously, the weekends are the busiest with Saturday and Sunday being the busiest. You'll see that Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, there was some hours logged, and that's because I gave them the flexibility this year of um, you know, if if an inspector was on vacation or sick, or if if it was raining and they couldn't do inspections that day, I give them the flexibility of, you know, coming and doing inspections on a different day of the week in in also to give us an idea of how many people are showing up during the week that we don't know about, you know. Um again, this year kind of matches last year, that the timeframe of eleven to four is really the busiest of the accesses. What's interesting, though, is if you look at the full report, which is online, Thole Lake, actually, their busiest time at the access was from four to ten. So people seem to be going to Thole Lake a little bit later in the day than some of the other lakes. Thank you. Um so looking at some of the violations that were found during people trying to enter the lake, so there was a total of about thirty um which is a total of less than one percent of all the inspections done. But most of them were, you know, plants that they found on either the boat or their trailer that were removable by by hand. Um and then next was, you know, people coming with the plugs in when they arrive at the access. Um so, you know, I've got the the detailed numbers there. But that that's been typical from last year as well. And so just kind of broke it down by lake. What's interesting, you'll see on O'Dowd Lake there. Um what's kind of also concerning about the O'Dowd Lake, you'll see the most of the violations were plants removable by hand going into O'Dowd Lake, which really kind of puts that lake at a little bit higher risk of um compared to some of the other accesses that more people coming to that access had more plants on their vehicle or their boat or trailer trying to trying to enter the lake. Now, O'Dowd Lake has two invasive species already, Eurasian water milfoil and curly leaf. And so plants that are still connected to a trailer or a boat can have zebra muzzles connected to those plants. So uh this is just a good example of how these inspections are really helping, you know, comfortably stop the transfer of any invasive species from one lake to another, at least in Scott County. Um next slide. So exiting inspections, so if if people have are already on the lake when the inspector gets there and they're coming off the lake, or if they come off the lake while the inspector is there, is what they call an exiting inspection. And those were mostly, as you can see by the graph, um plants removable by hand. So people are learning, we found. You'll see later uh in another slide or two that the the inspectors did mention that people are learning to be able to do this themselves, but um it's still it's still a learning process for a lot of people. Um and the concern about mud, you'll see mud coming out of Cedar Lake once, is that if mud coming off of a lake that has zebra muzzles, zebra muzzles can be in that mud. Now Cedar Lake doesn't have zebra muzzles that we know of, thank goodness, but um but other lakes, you know, especially in entering um inspection, if if mud have if people come with mud trying to enter the lake, that could contain um zebra muzzles or invasive snails. So next slide, thank you. Um so I just wanted, this is overall um of all the accesses and all the inspections that were done, just kind of a um a broad overview of the type of watercraft that they saw in twenty twenty. As you can see, the majority of them were fishing boats. Um the next majority is um sea boats or rumble boats. And then smaller percentages of some of the other, you know, iax or load boards will kind of a small amount or pontoons. Um so looks like most people are coming to fish, but there's there is a lot of recreation. One of the creators coming also. And so it's a good thing that I think using a vendor that is really teaching their inspectors on how to inspect different types of boats is really important as well. So um last slide. So just a summary, um and I and I really copied and pasted this right from the report that that they were hearing this year from their inspectors, that many boaters appreciated their presence at the launches and learned how to thoroughly clean their watercraft by watching their their inspectors and how their inspectors talk through that the techniques that they were using. So um an inspector that had returned from previous years commented that even though they had increased traffic this year, there was a notable increase in people already knowing how to clean their boats and equipment to prevent the spread. So um they recommended scheduling inspectors earlier on certain lakes, and and I certainly intend to do that. I'd also like to actually do um what we do with our curly leaf vendor is actually do an RFP and pick a vendor for these inspections on like a two or three or contracts, so we don't have to keep redoing this um every year, and we can get them started earlier in the year as well. So I think I have one more slide. I I plugged this back in from last year, just as a reminder to you, the Minnesota um Aquatic Invasive Species Research Center created a model in twenty nine or twenty eighteen on certain lakes and what their infestation risk is for certain um croc invasive species. So you can see for zebra muzzle infestation, Spring Lake being right next to Pryor, that's already infested, is really at a higher risk. But Cedar Lake is pretty up there also. So and then O'Dowd and MacFann. So we're, you know, we really are really doing this to prevent the spread of some of these really more serious invasive species. And um hopefully, we can continue this uh for a while, continue to get the legislative funding for it and um keep our lakes safe and clean. So that's all I had. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I can send out a link to the full report if you'd like to see it. It does break everything down by lake.
Thank you. That was very interesting um information I had not heard before. And I thirty out of over three thousand doesn't seem very bad to me. I don't know. Do we have a feel for how that is compared to other areas? Or?
I do not, because I don't see reports of other um areas, although they they might have it on their website. I could have at some point in time kind of looked to see, but um.
I I was just curious. I don't think it's taking the time to do it, but uh it it seems pretty low to me. So yeah, percentage wise.
It was a pleasant surprise to see that, yeah.
Uh the question's from Melissa. Okay, I think we can jump to your um local water plan.
Okay, so um so the purpose of this agenda item is to consider recommendation to the county board approve the city of Savage uh Water Resource Management Plan dated December of twenty twenty. The city submitted its water resource management plan to the Scott WMO via email on February twenty-fifth of twenty twenty. Um per Minnesota statute one oh three B point two thirty-five subdivision three, the WMO had sixty days to review, I'm sorry, to complete its review of their local water plan. And then we also have to can take and take into consideration Met Council's comments um in our review. Um so we completed our review with comments and a letter dated April second to the city, and that should be in your packet. Um the city responded on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. There's a little bit of a time span there because the city um was doing doing their update in-house. And so um takes a lot of staff time. Um so they responded with a response letter and an updated draft of their plan. Um I did review all those changes and their responses and feel that their plan has now been prepared in accordance with Minnesota statute um one oh three B and Minnesota rule eighty-four ten. So we feel comfortable um bringing this to you for a recommendation to approve their plan in into forwarded on to the county board for approval. So with that, I'll I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions or a recommendation to approve the plan and forward it on to the county for approval?
Commissioner Veerling, I will make a recommendation to approve the plan and to forward it on to the county for approval.
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
I'll do roll. Uh Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Veerling.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, motion is passed. Okay, next on the agenda, um watershed-based implementation, funding, budget request and work plan, Vanessa and Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So uh and we've touched base on this several times uh over the last year. Uh but I'm just going to really quickly uh repeat just a little bit of background. Uh the Board of Water Resources decided to overhaul uh how it allocates clean watershed-based uh funding for its land and legacy amendment allocations to try to make it uh more targeted, more stable and less competitive. The end result of that are what's called watershed-based funding. So their watersheds are being allocated based upon their larger Huck area. So for us, we're the lower Minnesota River watershed south. Uh so it includes um all of Scott County and some of uh Dakota County, and then all of the agencies within that. For uh the twenty twenty to twenty-one budget cycle, our watershed-based area in partnership was allocated um a total of about eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh of that, uh the WMO uh in partnership with the Southern Water Conservation District uh did pretty well. We got about three hundred eighty thousand dollars of that. So the am- amount to match the funds were actually approved in the WMO's budget for twenty twenty-one. Uh we brought this to the WPC back in November uh to review and approve uh as part of that budget. And of that budget allocation, there's actually two projects that we're actually bringing forward. So just to back up again a little bit, in April of twenty twenty, the WMO did begin participating in the Lower Minnesota River South Metro Partnership. I really wish they renamed that for the Revised Watershed-Based Implementation Funding Program. Uh the partnership had to get together several times to decide how we would prioritize and allocate that eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um after we decided how we would prioritize it, uh the group then also had to then put their projects forward. So again, we submitted two projects for that proposal. Keeping in mind that these must be prioritized and they must be Keeping in mind that these must be prioritized and they must be prioritized towards water quality. So water quantity is not really eligible for this program, nor are other types of pollution programs and activities. However, anything that directly impacts water quality is eligible. So the partnership did vote in November. And then again, in January of twenty twenty one, part of that is because there were several questions with Bowser regarding how they interpreted their program as to what is actually eligible. It was a lot of talking, a lot of back and forth, but we did end up having to bring a revised list back to the partnership group. That being said, the partnership voted again in January of twenty twenty one to approve a project and education program that was proposed by the SWMOL in conjunction with the SWCD. So the next step is actually to submit an official budget request to Bowser, which then moves to a work plan and then entered into agreement with the Board of Water and Soil Resources. Because of the short timeline we're now under, because that budget request is due on January twenty ninth, we are bringing this to WPC, but we won't necessarily have the opportunity to bring this to the board for their next meeting. So the application does request three hundred and twenty five thousand five hundred to be matched with fifty four thousand five hundred in local funds, which is in kind and cash. Primarily, we have it set aside as cash if we're unable to get partnership match funds from our local landowners. So the total budget of this project is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the project will provide two major activities. One is three hundred and forty thousand dollars towards targeted project installations, very similar towards our tax programs. Again, to be targeted and prioritized to meet water quality, we did target DNR protected waters and wetlands within the tier one southwest sub watershed, tier two credit river sub watershed, tier three, the sand creeks of watershed, and tier four, the Thole and Odell Lakes of watersheds. The reason why we targeted those areas was because you got more points if you targeted both impaired and protecting non impaired waters. So by hitting both, we support the grant higher. It leads to about thirty BMPs. In cooperation with about two dozen operators and includes both private landowners and local units of governments. Our target is eighty eight, eight hundred and eighty pounds per year of phosphorus, seven hundred and seventy five tons per year of sediment and eleven point five acres feet of runoff per year. So, sorry, my apologies. The second piece is a, we are going to come up with a better name. The Scott County Enhanced and Expanded K Through Five Conservation Education Program. So many of you are familiar with our wonderful outdoor education days, which we had to put on hold this year. It's, it's a very wonderful hands-on and engaging program that really helps target our youth and develop new stewards and improve water quality and protection within the WMO. It's, it's a critical activity that we do, but obviously it had some limited reach options. So uh, our proposal is to go ahead and find ways to improve and enhance this program by helping to streamline it to standards, making it more accessible for our teachers to find opportunities to really evaluate in this program in ways that are measurable, not just by county heads, but showing that education has occurred and learning has occurred. And then also to provide new opportunities to reach out to students. So if they can't come to us, we have more digital and electronic ways to interact with them as well. In case things like this happen again, or in case there's classes that we can't reach that way. And then also to target some of our underserved and some of our other children residents that just have not been able to participate. So those are the two different projects that we have brought forward. And so at this time, the grant does provide for an additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of water quality program as, as detailed in the memo over the next two to three years. It is already included in the WMO budget for twenty twenty one and would also be included in the budget for twenty twenty two. It does require a ten percent match, which is why it's been budgeted already. So it does not impact our budget at this time. But we would request a recommendation for approval to move forward with the application for the budget request and work plan and then entering into agreement with Board of Water and Soil Resources. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Questions for Vanessa. I do have a follow-up question. The, for the expanding the conservation education program. Does a contractor come in to do that? Or how, where are those funds going to go? Is it to the schools to do the, the research to figure out how to make these improvements or?
Excellent question, Madam Chair. The funds will actually go to the SWCD to hire a consultant, an educator. So somebody who is professionally trained, you that usually have a master's in education, but you work as a consultant, usually with schools to help improve programming and efficiency. They do exist. It's a smaller field that people don't know about, but their job is literally to help programs like this align with standards and help improve their education outcomes. And again, to make it show actual measured education outcomes, again, not just heads counted and leaflets handed out, but show that behavior has been changed and, and knowledge has been gained and stewardship is occurring. It's not something that's been typically done in our area, but obviously it does a standard in education. So we're just thinking to try to apply that now to this program to really to give us a better bang for our buck, I guess, is a more way to say it, but to really show that we are achieving our goals. So trying to think about how to phrase it.
Okay, thank you. Um, other questions? Do we have a motion to approve to move forward with development of the work plan?
This is Commissioner Pitt, Commissioner Weaver. I would recommend that, recommend to the board that we move forward with the proposal as presented to us today.
We have a second.
Commissioner Casilius will second that motion.
I will do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
And Commissioner Birling.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. That motion is passed. Thank you. Almost done. Nine elements, phase one agreement and work plan. Vanessa and Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's our last for the night. I do have the, I do have the meeting slated to end at six, so we do need to be done by six or it's going to end for us. And I do apologize. So try not to short you though on any areas you might have questions about. So this is our, our nine elements plan effort kind of coming into fruition now. In about twenty eighteen, the SWMOL submitted a letter of interest to participate in the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's new nine elements planning or section three nineteen grants. You guys have seen section three nineteen come across your desk many, many times. This is the MPCA and EPA's newest version of that to do something very similar to Bowser, which is instead of doing things that are, are more competitive, do things that are more targeted and dependable with funding. And that if you actually did complete the grant program, you really will show that you reached your impairment goals. And, and hopefully that your impaired waters would be listed at that point. Now that being said, obviously, we know that the, the nine elements plan was a very large planning effort, including lots of sub watershed, some watershed assessments. And is a very large overall planning effort. But it's, it's actually very exciting. Quite a lot. So it's intended to provide funding every four years for a total of sixteen years in order to achieve the full plan goals. So unlike many of our other plans where we kind of think about funding and kind of look at funding in our larger CIPs, this one is broken down into kind of four-year segments to reach that sixteen-year target goal. You're kind of broken it down into cohorts. So this first cohort cycle PCA has eligible ten different watersheds within the state. Now, within those ten watersheds, you also had to have an approved nine elements plan to receive the most points. And basically, if you didn't have an approved nine elements plan, you weren't going to score high enough really to get any points. So that meant those of us who've had area within those of watersheds and of course had the plan, were almost, you're not getting guaranteed funding, but you had a really good shot at it. So the sand creeks of watershed was one of those nine element planned targeted watersheds by the PCA in the first cohorts. And our plan was approved. So this is the first cohort of this new planning grant. So we're learning as we go. But PCA has been extremely wonderful to work with. They've gone to bat for the state many times with the EPA. Again, because this is an EPA funded program, the whole plan has to go to EPA for approvals. There was a lot of back and forth. And our, our friends at PCA did a lot of heavy lifting. So much, much appreciated to them. So that being said, the full plan is available now on the county website. It's lovely. A lot of great light reading. But most importantly, right now, we actually have to move into signing an agreement and work plan to start implementing those funds. So the application for this first four-year funding cycle requests two hundred and eighty four thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars to be matched with two hundred and twenty one thousand, three hundred and twenty five dollars in local funds. This is a forty percent match. So for a total phase one budget of five hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars. The plan does identifies and prioritizes different focus areas for implementation during each of the four phrases, phases. The plan itself actually guides what we do each phase. So if you're wondering how we went through this order, again, this is outlined in the plan. So for the first phase here of that total allocation request, two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, five and five hundred, two hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred dollars, I apologize, is to meet objective one, which is that our Pika Creeks of watershed. It's the larger Pika Creeker Bean Stabilization Project. We've been hoping to implement for some time and it's also in our plan, obviously. And then again, BMP implementations and tax programs. The second objective is the Cedar Creek Subwatershead. And then that is to implement Cedar Creek, Cedar Creek Wetland Resorption. And then there's oral wet detention basin. I can go either way, but that's the targeted project that's identified there. As well as a carp, carp kebab festival or kind of a similar community-driven engagement activity. So, so we know that obviously there's been a carp kebab festival in the past, but we know that carp are really aggressive in stirring up water quality in Cedar Lake. And so it's just another way to continue to connect with those residents and have them connect to their stewardship of those resources. Then there's also task three, which is again, just tax programs or technical assistance and cost share within that sub watershed. And then we did have a third objective. So of course, if there's not, we don't necessarily reach all of our funding goals with objective one or objective two, there's still objective three, which is the SMP, SMP implementation and tax for kind of the larger areas, which is more of the Pika Creeks of watershed, the Tholes of watershed. The MA two, which is kind of more of the lower middle sand creek. And then, and then MA five, which is kind of the Porter Creek largest of watershed. So I just realized I'm doing this and you guys can't see what I'm looking at. Sorry. So hard not being in person some days. So with that, the grant does provide for an additional five hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars of water quality program as detailed in the work plan over the next four years. The additional funding will be included in the annual budget and is already included in the twenty twenty one SWMOL budget. So therefore, accepting the grant does not affect SWMOL's special taxing district levy. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Questions for Vanessa? And if not, do you need a motion to sign the agreement and move forward?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would ask the WPC for a recommendation to approve authorizing entering into a grant agreement with MPCA for USCPA section three nineteen grant.
Do we have a motion to make a recommendation as stated?
I will.
Commissioner Casilius motions to move forward as, with a recommendation as stated.
All right. I will second. Commissioner Weaver.
All right. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
And Commissioner Birling.
Aye.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Commissioner Birling will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes. Give a second.
This is Commissioner Pitt. I'll second.
Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
And Commissioner Birling.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your time and patience. This was a longer one.
Yep. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Thank you.